Okay, let's call to order City of Forest Park, City Council Work Session Monday, June 7, 2021. We'll start this work session. The first item on the work session that I see is the Sora authorizing legislation, Councilwoman Moore and Mr. Jones.
All right, you want to go ahead, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I will. We, we had talked about this a little bit, excuse me, earlier, earlier this year and then, and that's more, I had talked about the need for, you know, for, for beautification and some benches and so forth. And absolutely. And a part of what we were working on was a grant from Sora, the Southwestern Ohio Regional Transit Authority. If you remember last, I think it was last November, not the most current election, the previous one. Any event, whenever it was, the issue seven passed, it was basically they called it the bus levy, and it provided additional funds and a revenue source to expand bus services out, which would normally into areas that normally didn't receive a lot of funds and a lot of services, meaning out here in the northern suburbs. Most of the time, a lot of the monies was related to downtown and specific routes that served the large businesses in the downtown area. Some of this money, I believe, is going toward infrastructure, there's a big percentage of it, including, if you recall, I believe, a good portion of this money is going to the Western Hills by that. So, in any event, there's a significant amount of money that is allocated and ready to be spent in which, in, in, in areas that normally would not be eligible, or there just wouldn't be enough money for us. So, we've put together, we're hoping to get first in line, but obviously, it's a competitive grant. The grant period has opened. We've re, we've been working on this grant since last year. We've got it ready to go. And essentially, what we're looking to do is over $2 million worth of, worth of improvements. And most of that would be related to, because they can do infrastructure. We're looking to repay portions of Witten Road and Kemper. And we're also looking to do bus stops, new benches, new, new pads for the buses, the concrete pads, essentially for that whole area through their bike, bicycle racks. And really, with an effort toward number one, improving the road, but most importantly, number, improving the look of the neighborhood, consistent, brand-new bus stops with brand-new amenities inside of them. And we think it will actually improve the look as once, also, once we get this, this new infrastructure in place, we would be hoping to work with Sora as well. And we've been working with, putting together some plans with our, with our engineers and to, you know, expand bus service out here to where it's really needed, where it'll go, where it needs to go, to help not only one with improving economic but also improving the ability of folks that don't live here to get here. And so, we think it's, it's an opportunity for us. We've put a, we're, we're matching this funds with a, or these funds with some skip money from the county and some, some state road funds as well. So, we're hoping that normally we would do like a 70, or 75, 25, or an 80, 20 mix. But we're putting a little bit more money into this. But a lot of that money is already from other grants as well. So, we hope to be first in line and to, and score well on, on this application. We may not get it all, but whatever we get, we'll use to, to benefit the community.
I have a question. And I probably shouldn't bring this up. But because this is talking about the Witten Road and Kemper Road transit corridors, and because it's talking about infrastructure improvements, it has long been discussed about walkways along Witten for the students traveling from Green Hills by, by walking. And I know that there have been problems with that because I don't know that we own property beyond the right of way to where there could be walkways put in there. I know that there were structural problems because some of it's bridge-like over, over culverts and things. Is that a possibility for the mix?
Um, I don't believe it is, but we've looked at that.
I didn't think it probably would be, but.
Yeah, we talked to the engineers about that and.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions from anybody else regarding this? I think we're moving in the right direction with this in, in that for years, we have begged and begged and begged and begged for them to do something out this way, whether it was adding additional routes, whether it was expanding. And unfortunately, like in so many cases with some other things, Forest Park seems to be the stepchild. Even when the mall was running at its peak, they wouldn't run buses out. Hopefully, with changes in the personnel and people down there, and we're, we're doing all of the right things that they say we need to do in order to be even considered. Hopefully, this time around will be the charm. All we can do is what we're supposed to do from our end. We, ultimately, we have no control over what they do there. But like in so many other things, I'm going to be sorely disappointed if we, if we get left out again. You know, I, I, I just, that's enough said. I don't want to, I don't want to come off any more negative than I already am. But I'm just tired of, you know, I'm tired of everybody else jumping ahead of us and lying when it comes to providing us with, with, with anything, whether it's, you know, the building, buildings in the county, county buildings in Forest Park, they have no problem taking them away from us. But then, there always seems to be some issue or some problem when we want them to, to consider us for, for, for something. You know, we're, we're the third largest city in the county, and probably when this census come in, we're going to be the second largest population wise. It is just blatantly unfair for us to keep getting passed over and passed over and passed over. They have absolutely no problems coming to us when they have these things on the ballot, and want us to support them and vote for them. But then, once that vote is in, it's, it's like, oh, where's Forest Park? We don't, you know, we're here. At least recognize that we're here. Any other questions for either Don or Dr. Moore?
Just a question in regards to this, and maybe in reference to what you just said, Chuck, does the 70, the request, whether it was 70%, kind of gives a better leverage because of how things have occurred in the past, or with, with 100% request and then might top out to get 70?
We, we, we tried it from all angles. We tried asking for a little, hoping we would get some. We tried asking for a larger amount, hoping that they would give us at least some of what we were asking for. It haven't seemed to make much difference one way or another. Mr. Brown?
Uh, yeah, this for Dr. Jones or Dr. Moore. A part of this.
Oh, it kind of went pros.
Oh, it froze up.
Yeah. Some of us did, I think.
Aaron froze.
Aaron is frozen.
Yeah.
Aaron, you're, you kind of froze.
No, we lost him.
Oh, hopefully he'll be back.
No, he's there, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, but.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to know if Sora has any numbers that they could give us as far as like ridership out in our area, especially as it, as it relates to east and west on Kemper, just so we can get an idea of if we're going to do any infrastructure improvements, if there is like a need to have, I mean, we are going to improve the, the bus stops, but is, there's, if we need to widen the lane for like a bus-only lane, or, or maybe even potentially study to see if there's anyone will be interested in adding a bike lane on, on Kemper or thing, or expanding the ones on Witten? Is that a part of funding for this?
Well, I think they can do some of those things. And you're absolutely right. Our engineers have looked at it, but that doesn't mean we can't add things to it as we go. We can, we can add anything that we want to pay for. But if you're, if you're putting in a mile of, of blacktop and it's 30 feet wide, you can make it 35 feet wide, and it, it doesn't add that exponential number of value. But we think, yes, the question is, we're, we're trying to right-size Kenwood Road, or excuse me, Kemper Road, because that seems to be the main east-west corridor. It really is. I think it's been deteriorated greatly by, by bus traffic and obviously, the amount of traffic it gets. But, you know, if, if, if this is going to be, and we believe it is, a primary east-west corridor, that's why we're putting that, the application in to get them to fix it and adding that to it. But the, we, we, we will look at adding, adding a bike lane if we can. I'll tell you that right now.
Yeah, I want you to have to, because I know so many people park on Kemper too. So, you know, I don't know how much blacktop.
I think what would end up happening is a lot of that would be parking.
Study should be, yeah.
Yeah, we want to widen it to the point where we improve that parking that's, that's bigger. Because that, that is a real, that's a real problem down there. And we'd like to keep the parking on the blacktop. Tough room where people can get off the road, yet not have to get into their grass to be safe. So, yes, we, it is, we are looking at that. And, and we think that, you know, that, that'll be in the final designs. This is the preliminary request. And for what we can do, our engineers have put a lot of time and effort into it. But we can still, they're not under final design yet. And we're going to try and improve Kemper as best we can, because that's a, that's a primary entrance and access point. But it's also a lot of folks' first impression when they hit, when they hit Forest Park. So, we want to make that one.
Okay.
Okay. Well, at this point, I think we're about ready, Dana, to go into our council meeting. So, let me know whenever you're ready, Dana. Call to order City of Forest Park, Council Meeting Number 1376, June 7, 2021. We will start with the, start with the pledge. Councilwoman Herbie, if you would, and the rest of us will silently follow along.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the row.
Brown?
Here.
Clark? Herbie? Here. Hope?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Yeah.
Southestern?
Here.
Is there a motion? That, Herb?
I would move to excuse Councilwoman Clark.
Second.
Move to second, that we excuse Councilwoman Clark. Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by a sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post is excused. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. You should all have had a copy of the minutes. And are there any additions and/or changes in the minutes? There are none. We'll move to item three, presentations. I have no listed presentation for this evening. So, that will take us then into item number four, communication from the public. Mr. Jones?
We have had no requests to address council or to discuss any or comments on anything that's on the next agenda.
Thank you, sir. We are to item number five, reports of standing committee, the first of being Community Development Committee, Councilwoman Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that we're having our community summer fitness series. And so, it's every Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And it's at the tennis court. And so, we encourage the community to come out, all ages, for our series. And it will continue until the weather changes, where we can no longer be out there. And so, there wasn't a lot of cicadas out there Saturday. So, please come out and join us in the community.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? There are none. I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session next week. Do you have anything to add?
Um, no. Just to remind the citizens to watch us on Facebook. So, if you don't want to come out, you can definitely see us on Facebook, um, live. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next committee is Human Resources, Councilwoman Hope.
Good evening. We, for the boards and commissions, we do have some openings. On a beautification commission, as I've stated before, even though we look online and it says zero, we are allowed to take on two or three more people if they're willing to serve on the beautification. The Charter Revision Committee, we have two vacant positions on that. Civil Service Commission, we have one vacant spot. Economic, economic development, we also have one vacant spot there. And the Environmental Awareness Board of Directors, they're, I'm sure, in two vacancies on that. Parks and Racks, I think there's one vacancy on there. Planning Commission, there are no vacancies there. Stormwater Utility Board, there's one vacant position. And on the Tax Board of Review, we're not showing any openings for that. I have received some applications for, to serve for, I have three matter-of-fact, for people that are willing to serve on, on the, on board to commission. So, if there's anybody out there that's listening that would love to serve on, on a board or a commission, there, we're happy to take your application and speak with you. The agenda, this year, it's kind of late, it's going to be June 26 and 27. And with that, that should conclude my report. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Councilman Hope? There are none. We were there. I don't have any items to add. So, we will go to item C, Law Committee, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any agenda, any items to the agenda at this time. But I, I do want to say, I know that since COVID last year disrupted our, our scheduled meeting for the summer, is, are, are we planning to schedule a, a committee meeting this, during this summer, this time?
Probably, probably some, at least one or two, whether we would do them on like a fifth Monday or how we will do it, we have not yet decided. Next report will be Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report at this time, or do I have any items to add?
Thank you, sir. Next one is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Clark is absent. We'll move to Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no report at this time.
Yeah, I have no item for you. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Uh, in government relations and communication, that's my committee. I have no report, and I have no items on the agenda. Go then to item number six, the mayor's report. Just briefly, I, the city manager and I attended at a grand opening on Saturday, yeah, for a, a new business now at Hamilton and Waycross. Very nice. It was a newly decorated business, a young lady who wanted to get into the, wanted to get into business on her own. She is managing it herself, and we obviously wait for the ribbon cutting and wish her all luck in the world with her new business. It's, I think she will do well there. It's a beauty salon. And I thank her for inviting us. And Paul, thank you for steering us to that. Also, just, we're into this, almost into the official summer, we're into recent, we're into summer summer, but not the quote official calendar summer, we're a few days away still. But one of the things that I would like to caution our citizens about, especially our ladies, and don't take this as being sexist, it's not meant to be, but unfortunately, there are people out there who would take what you have. I mentioned this because last week, down at our Kroger, we had a purse snatching. You've heard me say over, over the, over time, inside the store, be careful, don't leave your, don't leave your bag in the cart while you stroll down to the end of the aisle to get an item. Believe me, unless, you know, unless some of you can run much faster than I think you can, there's no way you're going to catch these young people, this person, if they snatch your, get your purse out of, out of the basket. However, this particular incident occurred in the parking lot. The person was coming out and started to unload her basket into her car. And again, left her purse on the basket while she was placing her purchases in her car. Two young men drove up, the guy on the passenger side jumped out, grabbed the purse out of the car, out of her cart, and took off. It only takes a fraction of a second for this to happen. So, always kind of beware of your surroundings, where you are, who's around you, what you're doing. Because let's face it, most of us don't ever expect to be robbed, or, and I'm sure most of you ladies don't expect your purses to be snatched in and around Kroger. But it does happen, and it can happen. So, let's be careful. And just another note along that same line, when you get home from the store, whatever store it is, and you open your garage and drive your car in and start unloading your things, please, please, let the garage door down before you start carrying, going, making sure it's back and forth, carry things into your house. Again, it only takes that fraction of a second while you're taking stuff into the house to come back to get another load. Somebody's in and out. There you have it. So, take heed, and let's be careful out there. And people, when, when you see something going wrong, our citizens, please report it. We can't do anything about those things for which we don't know. So, no matter how small you may think it is, let us know about it. We don't guarantee that we're going to catch everyone, or that we're going to solve every issue. But we have a far better chance of doing it when you tell us about it. That would end my report. I'm going to defer to the law director to tell us what, what the court schedule would look like over the summer. I don't happen to have that with me right now. So, that would end my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. And I will move next to the city manager's report, Mr. Jones.
Yes, thank you. I'll echo exactly what you said. Crimes of opportunity are rampant, not just in our city, but.
Everywhere.
And we, we have a very, very safe city, and that you just have to be aware where you're at, your surroundings, and, and take whatever precautions you can. I will talk a little bit about this coming Wednesday, we are going to have at the 12 o'clock, and I think most of you have been invited. But if there's anybody out there in the general public, Officer Charles McDonald lost his life 20 years ago. And we will be having a memorial, a remembrance of him at 1, excuse me, at 12 o'clock. He actually has a memorial stone in our Central Park, around the Grove. And we'll be meeting at the, at that area at 12 o'clock. And there'll be lots of people who worked with him. And the, the former chief, his former chief will be there, and some of his coworkers. So, we welcome anyone who, who knew him or just wants to come and pay the respects to him. From 12 to 1 o'clock, we'll be, we'll be meeting there at the, at the park and the shelter. If, if it's raining, we're going to go on down to the community center. So, if anyone wants to be a part of that, please feel free to show up at Central Park at the 12 o'clock this coming Wednesday. Again, the yard beautification, again, has been moved back to the end of the month. So, you got plenty more time to get those yards nice. As for the schools, we're normally, you know, don't report on what the schools are doing. But the, just so everyone knows, normally, the kids are out of school this time of year. They're having an extensive summer school program this year. And, and I think it's, 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 you know, going to benefit many of the kids that go there, trying to catch up with some of the things that they may have missed over the last year and a half. So, you know, keep your eyes open. There will be lots of kids still coming and going to school. And at least for the next month. So, also, you'll be seeing the, now that schools, you'll be seeing the old school and the high school start to go away. They hope to have that thing tore down by the time school starts next year. So, again, there'll be a lot of activity around City Hall, around Central Park, around the school. So, just keep your eyes open and watch out for those kids. The little report on the basketball courts, we are, we're going to resurface those and, excuse me, repaint those. So, they're going to be closed for, until that painting's done. So, we hope to have that done shortly. We also have some, some other things that we're looking at that may involve a mural in that area as well. So, we'll bring you more information as we get that. And that's about it. If anybody has any questions, concerns, I'll be glad to address.
Any questions for city manager?
Our building now for the public is open. Our tax office is back in their normal, their normal offices in City Hall and with the normal business hours. So, if you need tax information, or you need your taxes filed, or need to talk to anyone, City Hall is open. And we're taking whatever precautions we can. We have new interest policies and procedures. But there's been a steady, steady flow of folks, you know, coming to our tax office over the last, over the last week. So, again, City Hall is open, and we hope to be able to service everyone out of that facility.
Any questions for city manager? So, just to add a little bit to what Don just said, if you have not been over to the City Hall lately, or especially during business hours, one of the things you're going to see that is new, actually, it's, are signs. There are huge signs identifying various offices and what takes place in them. So, when walking the door, you'll see a huge sign up over the tax office, as well as one going down the stairs to Community Development Area. And the receptionist is there on duty. There is also a, a sign-in, self-sign-in kiosk, where people come in, they sign in, they're given instructions, they are part of the instructions that they're asked to sit in the lobby. And they give their, they, they give a phone number, and either they will be contacted via their phone number, or the person may walk down and get them, or they may call them over the intercom and say, you know, just like in a doctor's office, kind of, and say, you know, you're, you know, you can come on up now. And noted that people really are, really like this, because they feel like, you know, I'm not just going over there, and I don't know where to go or what to do. It's, it's, it's really, it's really a great help to people to know. It's, it's, it's really, it's really a great help to people to know how that is, how that functions. Also, one other thing on, on the schools, there was an announcement made late this afternoon that summer schools from now to the end of summer schools, at the high school, schools will be, those students are going to be dismissed at noon rather than running past, I think the, the time was before like one o'clock. So that's just informationally. Any other, anything else for the city manager? If not, we will move to other reports. First of all, being law director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everybody can hear me okay. I was having some technical difficulties and I had to switch to my cellphone. But since, since the last meeting, I've had a conversation with Chief Larns about the new uniform traffic citation form that will be used. The state extended the mandatory use time to allow municipalities to use up whatever ticket forms they currently have, which is helpful. And I also wrote the opinions about the committee meetings and committee voting. I hope everybody got an opportunity to see those opinions. If I, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that would be the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for law director? Being no one, we'll move to the next report, Clerk of Council's Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty-one and resolution number ten dash twenty twenty-one were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? There are none. We will move next to item number nine. There is, however, a motion, I believe. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only. Ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
It's been moved to second that we suspend the rules requiring a reading in full on two separate days and read ordinance twenty, eight twenty twenty-one by title only. Is there any discussion?
Just that it was posted as required and also it was read in full at our last meeting, May seventeenth. So we will vote tonight.
Thank you. Would the clerk then call the roll on the motion?
No, read the motion first.
I'm sorry. Would the clerk read the motion by title only?
This is the suspension, right? We're voting on
We're voting on the suspension first. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Motion to suspend, vote passed six zero. Next item on the agenda is item A, ordinance number zero eight twenty twenty-one. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty-one, amending section thirty of the general provisions of the Forest Park Code of ordinances.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We move in a second that we're about, uh, ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty-one. Is there a discussion?
Just as a reminder, this was read in full the last meeting. It is about some standardization and some minor changes to the petty cash policy of the city and establishing where those will be held and the general amounts that will be held in them. And so I urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll, ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty-one?
Herbie.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Did we lose him again?
I think we lost him.
Yeah, I will also.
Okay, well, in that instance, then the motion would pass five zero. I'm sure Mr. Brown will come back into, uh, saying. Next item on the agenda is new business. Resolution, item A, resolution number eleven twenty twenty-one. This resolution must, first, we need a, a motion. We need a, the clerk to read this resolution in full.
Resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Transit Infrastructure Fund programs and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the Transit, Transit Infrastructure Fund program provides of funding for the general construction or maintenance of roads or bridges and related facilities involved in the provision of service by the Regional Transit Authority. And whereas the City of Forest Park is planning to make capital improvements to the Winston Woods, to the Winston Road and West Kemper Road transit corridors. And whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the Transit Infrastructure Fund. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. The city manager, section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to apply to the Transit Authority for funds as described above. Section two, the city manager is authorized to enter into any agreements with the Transit Authority as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we adopt resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Um, no, this is read in full, so I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-one?
Hope.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-one passed six zero. Councilman Brown? Councilman Brown, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Councilman Brown, we lost you la, on the last vote on ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-one. I wanted to go back and get your vote on that ordinance.
Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. So let the record show that that vote on the ordinance would have been seven to zero and the vote on the resolution is seven to zero.
Oh, not seven.
Six to zero.
Six to zero on both, I'm sorry. We will now go to item B on the new business, a motion, that would be Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Josh Schiffer from the Stormwater Utility Board for the term expired eleven thirty twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Moved and second that we accept the resignation of Mr. Josh Schiffer from Stormwater Utility Board. Is there any discussion?
No, there isn't, thanks.
There are none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
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 Opposed. And the motion would pass six zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, a motion, Councilwoman Hurt.
Yes, I would move to convene to executive session to discuss the purchase of real estate.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real estate. Is there any discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Motion to convene into executive session passed six zero. We will go into executive session. No official business will be taken during that executive session. When that executive session is finished, we will come back with a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular meeting. Now I need a motion, we're coming out of executive session and need a motion. I'm here.
I would move to adjourn the executive session and reconvene into the regular council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we adjourn the executive session and reconvene in the regular council meeting. Is there any discussion? There are none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sign of voting aye.
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 Opposed. Now we're back in the regular meeting and we're at the end of the agendas. Is there any more bids to come before the body? Any more bids to come before the body? If not, before, uh, let's see, Reggie, not me, I'm sorry, Aaron, are you still with us? Aaron, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Aaron, um, give me a call sometime tomorrow if you don't forget it. Okay? And Rosalyn, give me a call later. Thank you and you all be safe out there. Yeah, oh, my, uh, yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, did I, I, I think I, I believe I missed to add any something to work session.
Okay, what is that? What would that be? Right now, we don't have any. Right now, we don't have any items on the agenda for work sessions, but tell me what, what you want to add.
Um, a potential, um, a presentation for a potential partnership with organization, nonprofit called Collective Visions for helping, helping showcase Forest Park through art, community art installations.
Okay, uh, I will tell you that if there are other items on the agenda, if there, you know, I don't know what Don may, may have coming up or, or lead it. But if we, if we in fact have a meeting or whether that meeting is standalone or before, we'll put that on the agenda. Sally, did you get that?
She not. Um, I'm not sure what the title, that was kind of long.
Yeah.
If we can just shorten the title.
Councilwoman Clark, if you would give Sally that information, you don't have to do it right now, but between, give her, send her email, text, or call her tomorrow and give her that information.
Yeah, just a presentation on community art installation. That's it.
Okay, any, any, anything else to come before the body at this time? I think we, the pandemic is still out there, although some of us haven't, don't, don't know that yet. So act accordingly in terms of whatever, wherever place you may have happened to be or whatever, you know, facility you're in, whatever their rules are, we follow and stay safe, people. Good night. Everybody be good.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.